Let's call this meeting ordered. Would everyone join me in pledging allegiance to this? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Could I have rule call, Mr. Dawson?
No.
Here.
Trusty Connor.
Here.
Trusty Short.
Here.
Trusty Corrigan.
Here.
Superintendent Sullivan and Deputy Corrigan, here.
Thank you. I believe before all our board members, we had minutes of our last board meeting. Would there be any additions or corrections to these minutes? And if not so, could I have them have a motion to have them accepted as written? Motion, trustee Corrigan, second trustee, short, out of favor.
Yes.
At this time, before I get into our board business, would there be anybody in the general public that would like to address the board? And could you state your name, please?
Yes, my name is Jim LaFave, and I live at 726 Prospect Street. And the reason I'm here to see the board is to ask the board if they would consider looking into the possibility of having some sort of village ordinance on controlling the use of ATVs within the village limits. I submitted a letter to the board all about a week or so ago, I don't know if you had a chance to read it or not. Basically, I'll go over, summarize it. When I first moved to 726 Prospect Street, maybe a week or so after we moved there, I realized that this was quite a hotspot for the use of ATVs. I mean, they were all over the place along that stretch of the road. And we put up with the noise for almost four years. I mean, we had law enforcement there, we contacted the village, what can you do, you know, stuff like that. The impression that we got was, this is not really much you can do, they're on their property. After about five years, it finally quieted down. And then two weeks ago, it started up again, except this was a different neighbor. And unfortunately, it's running around and around the property, just a few feet from my house, and it goes on for hours on end, it never stops. With a little research, this time I did some digging, Superintendent Sullivan was very helpful in supplying me with the noise ordinance, trying to coach me along. Talked to a few law enforcement agencies in northern Clinton County, and found out there are avenues that we can take. You can use a little bit of our present noise ordinance, but it's very shady, it's basically all for interpretation. But you can get into the New York State penal law and start filing charges of disorderly conduct and stuff like that. But that gets pretty ugly when it comes in between neighbors, and it's something that, like I said, nobody wants to get involved with. I've got better things to do with my time than basically try to quiet things down around the neighborhood. Another, besides the noise that ATVs put out, and when I say ATVs, I'm talking dirt bikes, three-wheelers, four-wheelers, high-powered go-karts, believe me, whatever's out there, I've seen it on Prospect Street. Besides the noise, it's safety. Five years ago, there was a four-wheeler being operated around my property line next to my backyard, they lost control of it, they came flying through the fence, the operators were knocked off, and the bike ran out of control until it hit a tree in my backyard. And thank God there was nobody back there. That's one thing I had absolutely no control of, is how are they operating that ATV in their yard? Are they being reckless with it? Are they being responsible with it? Are they wearing helmets? So on and so on. So what I am asking, whether you make it, basically an amendment to the noise ordinance or come up with a whole ordinance by itself, is to basically get control of this situation because my personal belief is, three-wheelers, four-wheelers, dirt bikes, they do not belong in a residential neighborhood in a village setting. I mean, that's not the place for them. And you can't really count on people to, number one, know this or even respect this. So, the current situation is now, it started up two weeks ago, a week ago I had a heart-to-heart talk with the parents of the kids who were operating the bike, and he was gracious enough to basically understand a little bit what we were going through, and he pretty much pulled the bike at this time. So, I come to the board basically for help to try to make it easier to try to control this in the future. Because this is going to crop up again, not with me, it's going to be with somebody else. This is going to happen to anybody in the village.
Do you have it all hours of the night?
Sometimes it's seven in the morning, and in the past, gone until 11, 12 o'clock at night.
So I know wintertime, we run into a problem with the snowmobilers at two in the morning to get going, and it's very loud.
Everywhere.
Huh?
Everywhere. See, I don't mind that as much, because usually you get buzzed, you know, they're here in their dawn. But when you use that kind of, even snowmobiles, you use that in your yard, you just do circles and circles right in the middle of a residential neighborhood, everybody around that property suffers. Because if you've got a deck in your backyard, if you're trying to read a book or watch TV in your home, you can't do that if you've got a two-cycle motor being revved and horse next door. So, the big thing is, what it boils down to is, what kind of quality of life are we going to promote in this village? We want people to come in this village, build homes, raise up families, stay and retire. But we've got to do so with the understanding that if you do build a nice house in this village, that you're going to get a certain level of peace and quiet and be able to enjoy that property and that home.
Oh, I do believe that we've been waiting for some correspondence from Attorney Keeble on this because we ourselves, you know, since the complaint, have been some investigating. And myself, I've read the laws, what have you. I think it's a problem. I think the board wants to do something with it, but actually, we're waiting for our attorney for some of this stuff. I believe that he was supposed to get back to us by this evening, Mrs. Dawson. So it's not like it's fallen on deaf ears, it hasn't, but we have to watch what we do as well, too. We don't want to do anything that, because I've read some of this stuff, we have to watch what we do to safeguard ourself as well. I just wish we'd had some more literature, we'd had literature from our attorney for this evening, but we don't, and it was supposed to have been here this evening, but it's not. Jim, I can try and keep you abreast of what's happening.
Sure.
You know, not to say that we're not doing anything with the issue, because we are, but it's like anything else, if we're going to do something, we have to make sure that it's right. I myself, I'm not bothered with it, but I'm sure you're on a close outlying area where there's fields in your back, and, I mean, I don't know, I don't know. You know, I don't know what we're going to do, but I know in our local law, it says we could use a decibel meter, I think above 75 decibel. But then you have to have somebody that's qualified to run that, and they have to be caught in the act, and then you have to have the enforcement that will be able to take care of it. So maybe there's different ways that we need to do this, I don't know. Like I said, we're waiting for our attorney, and I'm hoping that we can get something out of it that we can work on as a board to try and correct this problem. Anything else?
Like I told you when you called me, Jim, things don't go quickly. This is something, especially when you're changing laws or adding things to our, it takes time, and it's just not going to happen in a month or two months, it's usually going to take longer than that.
Yeah, it's going to take us some time. But we know the issue's out there, we want to make sure that whatever we do is fair to all parties involved, okay? I mean, you would only want that if it was for you, you'd want it to be fair for yourself as well.
Well, absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
And a good law does take time. Like I said, not only you want to, you don't want to contradict anything, especially on the state level, you want it to be enforceable as well.
That's right.
My personal opinion, going through the noise ordinance, I think it should be revamped a little bit, because it contradicts itself in some places. Like, you have one section that says that you're not allowed to make any noise that is disturbing or detrimental to the peace and harmony of one's property, and then right behind it, it says you will not make noise that's over 75 decibels on your neighbor's property line. And like I said, how many people have a decimal meter, and how many people do you have that operate it, so is it even worth having that clause in there? So maybe it's, like I said, I do have options. Like I said, I've talked to our neighbors to the east, and they don't even have a noise ordinance. If somebody's operating a bike in a neighborhood like that, and they are asked repeatedly to cease, and they do not, they're tried with disorderly conduct. And they said that it sticks, because part of disorderly conduct law is, you will not make unnecessary noise that is disturbing and intruding. So there's no rush to get this done. I'd rather see, like I said, I would consider, I would wish that the board would look at the noise ordinance, get rid of all the shady areas, the contradictions and stuff like that, because it gets into specifics like music, you're not allowed to holler and yell and stuff like that.
Oh, shut my house down.
Honking your horn on your property, you know, it mentions little things like that, but it doesn't address the more serious things that can really destroy your quality of life.
Well, I think probably a lot of these laws were done a long time ago, before some of these vehicles were around.
Exactly.
Right.
So it's probably a little outdated.
So, yeah, that's what I'm saying, we need to review it, and I think we're in the process of doing that.
Well, I'd appreciate any attention that you would give this. And again, I'd like to thank Bob Sullivan and the staff for helping me out in every way they could.
Did Bob copy you with our local law?
Yes, yeah.
Did he copy you with the information from NICOM that I received?
No, I did not receive that.
Okay, I can have a copy for that if you'd like to pick it up.
Here, I'll give him mine, and then I'll just get a copy from you.
And NICOM is our legal counsel for the state, and they gave us copies of various laws and guidelines, and I think if you'd like to have a look at it, this is going to our attorney also.
Right. That would be very helpful, thank you.
You can take mine, and I'll just get another copy.
Thank you.
Is that okay, Jim?
That's fine.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your attention.
Thank you for coming. Yeah, thank you for coming.
Yeah, we need to go do it together in the town of Mount. Good evening. Happy you, too.
Apparently at this time, I do not see anybody else from the general public that would like to address the board. So we move on to the merit report. As you've all been copied with, our village justice had retired as of the 1st of September. I myself have been in contact with one individual. We have correspondence from another individual that's interested in a justice position. Again, they have to, one of them probably has to go more into depth, one of them has to do less. Talking to the clerk, through conversations with other individuals, we had some cases that were really coming up that needed to be addressed. And at this time, I would like to appoint Jeff Menard as our acting justice until elections, which means he is already a justice. He will fill the position until elections, and then elections, I would hope to see these two individuals run for the post. Like I said, he's already a justice. So when it comes to election time next year, we will need somebody to run for this position. And you will get Mr. Menard in. Okay.
Court tomorrow.
Good. This past month, we had a, it was a few individuals, Rainey, myself, one from the planning board, Robert, we'd had an informal meeting with a developer who was looking to develop a large, develop some housing in the village of Champlain. He has some property that he has picked out, some as well is out in the town that he's looking at. I believe we're waiting for some information to come from him. He was going to visit with the town as well. He's looking to build medium-cost housing in the village. And of course, being on the board, we're we're kind of receptive to the object of building new homes in the village of Champlain. But just to let everybody know, the heads up, that we did speak with a developer. He will get back to us with any of his intentions and what has happened with property acquired, what have you. If this does take place, it's going to be nice for the village of Champlain.
When was this meeting?
Pardon?
When was this meeting?
Two weeks ago. Yeah, it was in the morning, yeah. Yeah, but just, it was an informal, we get together quick, there's individuals in town.
Well, down to the developer, just wanted to get a feel of the area and kind of what's going on here in the village. So, he wanted to meet with somebody who could be available, kind of spur of the moment, I guess, sort of thing that.
So he was just an individual?
He was feeling us out, we felt him out, just see where we're going with it, and I think it came out very productive.
I think so, too.
So there's a lot of possible, there's obviously nothing's engraved in stone, that'll be coming back to the board unofficial.
I'd just like to know about this before I come to the board meeting, I think that's only fair to the rest of the board members themselves, that something did take place like this.
I apologize for that.
I never gave it a thought, and not only that, I guess it was discussed that it could be televised at the board meeting or something.
Right.
I never said anything to anybody, but you're right, yeah, well, I think, yeah. I never thought about it.
Yeah, I apologize. But like I said, it was one of them spur of the moment things, and boom, we went down.
Yeah, that's understandable, but I just.
I never gave it a thought, it was very productive, too.
Yeah, I'd like to know more.
I don't know, did that developer state that he wants to kind of keep low profile?
As for right now, yes, until something else comes through, that's why it's really not, it was just a point that I would like to have brought up to the board, that's all.
It's a teaser.
Well, it's something that happens, and I think, you know, we need to know, right? That's all. It may not ever turn into anything, but, you know.
It's good, I think, for the board to know, and obviously, like Chuck said, that was just an oversight.
That was our oversight.
But not only that, but for the local community who's watching right now, to see that somebody is taking interest in this little community, as small as it may be, so that might show a little sign of potential of what could happen or can happen here. If a developer from out of this area is coming here, obviously, there's an attraction of what, we're not really sure, but.
To spur that, something had to been somewhere down the line, you know.
Well, maybe because of the expansion at the border, it might have something to do with it.
Yeah, it could be as well. That's what we're, it wasn't really an indication on his part, but. It was a good meeting anyways, it was a short one, and again, I apologize. Again, we were, we've been waiting for some from some guidance, attorney, our attorney was going to get back to us on these school signs. You know, they're starting to haunt us, we're looking to see, and I think what we need to do is get some kind of written documentation through the school stating that it is no longer a school, so then we can enact a local law to have these signs removed. But until that date, again, we're at the mercy of someone else.
They've removed the school sign, it doesn't even state that it's a school anymore.
No.
In any way, shape, or form.
Right.
It's just a building.
It's just a building, but the school zone, the speed signs are still there, and we can't inadvertently just go take them down. I think they were put there by local law, and they'll have to be removed by local law. So we've got to wait before we get information, dating as much. And I would like to, for my last thing, I would like to call an executive session tonight to discuss personnel issues, and that'd be it for myself. Thank you. Trusty Connors?
Yes. First of all, apologize for not being at last board meeting. I didn't see anywhere where we established the fall pickup days.
We've had many calls, too. We've had many calls.
And, yes, and so I think we should do something at this time. We usually have a minimum of two pickup days. In the past, it's been before Halloween, and then I think in the past few years, we had to do it after Halloween because of the late falling of the leaves on the trees, so.
We're late this year.
Yeah, but I think we should have something, at least one before Halloween.
Brush pickup.
And I don't know the schedule of what's going on, but I think we should try and schedule one prior to the 31st of October. Do you have a?
Usually we do that.
Well, we make it.
It's usually on a Tuesday, well, it used to be on Tuesday.
It used to be on a Tuesday, right.
But because of people's schedules.
You definitely need one after Halloween for the vote.
Right.
We used to do the two before Halloween.
And then we'd do the third one.
Pick up all this stuff, yeah.
Right.
And you've got to get the people, some people put stuff out, then a week later, they put some more stuff out, so.
Right. So, she'd have been, so on a Tuesday, would be the 7th, 14th, 21st?
And I don't know what the schedule of everybody's, especially with Woody going to schooling.
Well, Woody's at the school this week, and we're flushing hydrants right now, and we're going to start hauling sand tomorrow, the town is going to be hauling sand, but they have a truck down, and you've got one guy that's leaving the local service. So he's going to start hauling sand next week when his truck's gone. And when we get done flushing hydrants, we've got a culvert to put in over on South Street. And as soon as they move the focal base in their area, we have to put an extension up there. The water and sewer is already in on Locust Street, there's a point for them to come do their hookup or whatever they're going to do.
But what's the last Tuesday of the month?
The 28th.
The 28th.
Would that seem realistic?
Because most of the leaves, we get rid of quick, and we get rid of the brush, and we don't have to.
Right.
We probably get some community service to cut the bags open and empty them, so.
So would that be a good time, is Woody here, or is he?
He should be back by then.
He should be back.
Yeah, Woody's just gone this week.
Right. October 28th, do we want to schedule one the week before as well?
Well, I don't know if I do one a week before, I do one the 28th, and I do one in November.
Right, that's what I thought, one before.
Because it's not as bad as it used to be 20 years ago.
No.
Really?
No.
No, but I think people would like to get it done before Halloween.
Yeah, just to get it cleaned up, yeah, yeah. And there are some people that have some stuff out already. The guy from the county is Hathaway, he's going to be coming probably next week, Janice. I'm going to leave some rates, send some bags up for him. As soon as the leaves start falling, he cleans all the dishes on Oak Street and stuff, and we just have to pick them up. So he had to put like 600 bags last year.
So we're going to go with the 28th of October as our first pickup?
That's our refuse?
Because it is good.
I don't know. I should look at all his computer on the list, but look and see what he had planned.
But it'll certainly be before next month's meeting, I would think, the next pickup.
Yeah, we do that.
The second one.
Right. But you have election in there, too, huh?
Election day's on the 4th.
Which is a Tuesday. Fall of Tuesday would be 11th.
That's better instead.
So people be off?
It doesn't have to be a Tuesday, we can do like a Tuesday, a Thursday.
Right.
Do the 12th the day.
The thing is to get more done, because Woody works the sewer plant on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, and Steve's off, so if we put it on a Thursday, we've got four guys instead of three guys.
So you're saying that Thursday?
It's up to you for two months.
So let's do Thursday the 6th of November then, right? And we can actually do.
Well, I'm going to let you pick that, because I'm not going to be here, so I feel guilty if I say yes. Yes, that, it's ours, I'm going to be gone that whole week to Texas, so, just to let you know.
Well, I'm just concerned, because I know last year, we ran into some snow.
Yes, and we had snow on top of us.
Yeah.
And I'll tell you, when they're wet, it doesn't matter.
So I don't think we're going to go too far out.
Well, no, we'll do October 28th, which is on a Tuesday, and we'll do November 6th, which is on Thursday, for our second pickup.
Can we can't do it next week for like your brush pickup?
What's that?
Towards the end of next week? Because you've got a long holiday weekend coming up.
Towards the end of next week?
People do a lot of work in their yard.
Yeah, because that's all I have to have, is one guy at the tank pushing the sand, it's all up, so it leaves us, it'll still leave us three. And Steve's gone on the 6th of November, so that'll be two of us off, because Woody will be working at the waste lot again.
So 6th of November, it'll be two people off.
Yeah.
Which, so that's not a good day.
What would be good days? Because what we're looking for is to get what the workforce.
Why don't we do it on that Friday? I'm going to be gone, I mean, if you want to go, I know you don't want to go late on it.
No.
And the 31st of Halloween.
Definitely want, I definitely want at least one pickup before Halloween.
Or do it on, do it on the 3rd, do it on Monday. Because the stuff doesn't go to the landfills, it doesn't happen often.
So you're saying the 3rd of November?
Yeah, that's too close together, I think, isn't it?
Five days.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you've got to give them a week, so. We had to, because we had 14 trucks full of bags.
And you probably want it earlier in the week than later, because people do it over the weekend.
Right.
Yeah, in case it does snow.
And people are doing a lot right now, because this weekend's supposed to be gorgeous.
Yeah.
You know, and then it gets too cold, and it's left.
What about the 10th of November?
We definitely can't do it earlier in October, right? Is that what you're saying?
It doesn't make a difference to me, we can do it the week of the 20th.
Like, is he saying that Corpus Day is next?
That's next one day, so.
That's next month.
It's supposed to be a beautiful week, all week, so, you know, get out there.
Why don't we figure on the 16th?
16th, the Thursday after.
That's National Boss Day.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, the 16th, 16th of October.
And then the 28th, that's almost two weeks apart, right?
Yeah, but you don't want to bang two in the, before Halloween, because then you're going to have to do a third one.
Okay.
And then we're looking at, we're looking at the 3rd of November then.
And if that messes and picks up Downstreet, we're going to be looking at picking up a lot of stuff, because they're going to be throwing stuff.
Well, that's one of my other questions, I mean, we can't have that.
I stopped picking up a bunch of that, we were going out in the road because of that heavy wind that was out there.
So we're going to set up the dates.
16th and 17th.
The 16th of October and the 3rd of November. Those are going to be our two pickups, and if we need to put one in between, we will go some such.
No, we always have stragglers after we have to drive and pick it up, because if you don't pick it up, you're plowing it, it's not the road, it gets snow.
Is it anything on both days, or do you do brush one day and leaves the other?
We usually go around, pick all the bags, and then we go around, pick all the brush, because if we just don't pick it up that day, it may take us two, three days to pick up all this stuff. We usually put a set of forks in front of the tractor, and then a set of forks to pick up brush, it's a lot quicker.
So we have our pickup dates, the 16th of October and the 3rd of November, and I believe that can be put in the paper, okay?
Okay. Another thing that I had. Um, another thing that I had was, and it's, she was just mentioning, the main street building, um, clean up from the fire. Uh, I realize that they're waiting, you know, because of the asbestos and all that, that things don't move as fast as we'd like to see them. But I don't think that's any reason why that has, that Woody has to be into the street, on the side of the buildings, getting scattered all over the place, you know, even on the sidewalk. I mean, it's just, it's hazardous, dangerous. There's gotta be some way that some of that can be pushed back towards the building so it's not right next to the road or on the road. I mean, it's.
I think there was certain issues to that, and we did get a report back from the asbestos people.
Yeah, Griffin.
From Griffin stating, stating that there is, you know, stating that there is asbestos in it. And I think Bob.
But only in the roof, not in the stuff that's laying all over the ground.
My point is, once there's asbestos, if there's asbestos, they don't care if it's in the roof or in the basement or wherever, the minute you touch it. Bob got special permission to move some of the brick outside, we had to get to the curb stuff to shut the water off. When you get into that, it's federally regulated and, and it's.
Well, the state is bad.
Well, there, okay, we have a report.
At least what we, what the positive side to this is, the, she has got the report, we have it back.
Right.
Now it's up to her to make the next move. They've identified it and where it is. Now it's up to the property owner, I believe that's the, the procedure, to schedule with the asbestos abatement people.
Right.
Then, then it's an open house. We could go and move something if we needed to or whatever. The minute we cross that line, we're, we're not violating federal law.
But how long does she have to address this? This was received on the 10th of September.
Yeah, and she's already got the report back from Griffin, and I'm not sure what the, I'm guessing the normal procedure from Griffin is longer than that, so it's, it's actually went fairly smooth or fast.
Right.
And I believe the identification of it isn't that critical. The problem is, it's been identified as asbestos.
I understand.
You can't cross that line until they're done with their.
I think what needs happening is, maybe in Robert's absence, Larry might need to get hold of the landowner and find out what kind of timetable she has on having that building removed.
Even if she's done, well, something will better with that fence, that saw.
Right. I think there's some issues. You need to let her know that the board has some issues about, about that, and we have the, we have our weather that's gonna be coming in and.
They're gonna be plowing snow, you know, and so you, you need, you need.
We need sidewalk clean for people to walk. We're gonna be walking in the road.
I think it should be addressed better than we have snow coming and we're gonna have to work around it, is that it needs to be cleaned before the snow comes.
Right.
That's what I mean.
I think that's where we need to go. We need to find out what, what her.
Yeah, because when you're coming, when you're pulling off Cedar Street, you can't see what's coming around that curve.
Yeah, we need to get to that as ASAP and find out what the timetable is on it and get back to Mrs. Dawson or whatever.
Oh, I'm not sure if Bob had it in his report, but she called on Friday and to let us know that she, her, the variance is, that the state has her variance. The asbestos company was done with it and has moved along and state has it now.
So once you get state approval, it's a no.
Right.
Good.
That was late Friday and I didn't know if you had, put in the report.
I, I don't think, um, I don't think the property owners intentionally do anything. Just a lot of communication between Bob and the property owner because of procedure. Nobody's real familiar with it. So Bob's been guiding there along, and I think the result of this one is much faster than what we see in the past.
But my concern is Bob's gone for two weeks and we just can't have that thing sit.
Right. If it's at the state, if it's at the state level now, they should be throwing in the keys here shortly.
I don't know how it all works, but she all, he asked me to call her back to tell her that, that there's a, some sort of a waiting period, 10-day waiting period or something, and that he's kinda telling her to, to move along, get ahold of her contractor so he can start doing what he has to do.
I heard scuttlebutt that she has, but I don't know that.
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, could you follow through with that, Larry? Find out which one.
I'm gonna call it.
Yeah, that way we'll find out what's happening with that. Thank you, Joe.
Okay. Um, another item I have is, uh, in the very near future, I may be reviewing medical insurance policies and, uh, what we have now and what other policies are available. Uh, I have some information hopefully by the next meeting. This is something we've discussed during our budget process, and we agreed to wait until towards the end of the year because the policies run from January 1st to December 31st.
Right.
And, uh, just take a look and see what's available, uh, and go from there. So just want to let people know that I won't be reviewing that, and I may ask Janice to assist me a little bit, maybe getting some other information if possible, like we did last spring. Uh, the other thing is, I had a complaint yesterday, and I guess it's, it's something that's already been, been in the process about vehicles in the village, multiple vehicles at one resident. So I think we need to try and escalate that as, as quickly as possible, not let things sit, and do what's necessary to alleviate these problems. So I, I know excited. Bob is gone for two weeks. We just can't let things sit because Bob's not here. I think we have to do something. Yes?
A follow-up on that. Um, we checked on their registered letter that was sent, and it had never been picked, picked up. The post office said they have 15 days. They'll hold it for 15 days. So I went ahead and sent the same letter, regular mail, to them. So it went, it'll go right to their home. So they don't have any reason not to pick it up because it will be delivered to them.
But not proved.
That's right.
No.
So I think.
Janice is still in the post office for that reason.
Well, I, I don't, I don't remember if it was a post office box or a, or actual physical address.
Is this, is this something, does anybody know here that if we have a, the sheriff's department hand deliver it? Is this something that's possible?
I think that's what, I think that's our next request. That's what I was gonna say.
It's gonna cost us, isn't it like $50 or something like that? I think that's what it was before we had something like this.
$50.
And I, I think we should look at that avenue soon.
Right, and have that hand delivered right to the individual stating, here you are.
It's gotta be done by law enforcement.
Yes, it does.
Yep.
Do you wanna sort of time frame for that?
ASAP?
ASAP.
You know, one to your convenience.
Right.
But I don't think we can wait two weeks for Bob to get back to, to pursue it anymore. I think we have to take care of it. It's, it's been, I don't know how many weeks it's been since the letter was sent out.
Very beginning of September.
But this is something we have to handle in time.
I think if we don't hear anything towards the end of the week, I think we need to get hold of the sheriff's department and see if they will hand deliver that.
They will.
Okay, oh yeah. That way we know it'll be there.
I think the code says you can't have one, two registered vehicles in there anyway.
Oh, right, we know.
Yeah. There's four, I think four there in a whole.
Yeah. Okay, then. So if we don't hear anything by the end of the week, okay? If you would, please.
No, I'm gonna have an executive session. You're asking for an executive session?
Right.
Uh. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask that people, that, I don't know if this would apply. No, I, I'm gonna ask for an executive session for contractual, uh, consideration. Can we do that?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have.
Trystee, Charlie?
Um, I just wanted to bring up, uh, something in our executive session about, um, personnel issue with the youth commissioner.
Okay, then when we get to the executive session, then we'll all come together.
That's it.
My turn?
Your turn.
My first one?
Your first one.
Okay, we had a zoning board meeting on September 10th, and four, um, requests were brought to our attention. I had to leave in the middle of the meeting, but I got all the answers. I came back at the end. Um, the first one, and tell me if I don't need to go into this kind of detail, I have no idea, so. Norman and Janice Koslowski on 26 Locust Street. Um, it was adjourned because we weren't aware whether neighbors had been notified yet. They wanted to get closer to, they wanted a variance on the 10-foot from the property line. So we were going to send out a letter notifying them before we could move on. So let's move to the next meeting. Um, the Westmoreland Company came to us for the new FedEx building that's being built, and they were asking for a variance to eliminate the landscaping along Prospect. Uh, they were denied. They will do the full landscaping all the way around. Um, we felt that we wanted to keep it classy as it's looking and not another Kimpek situation. So, um, they will do the full landscaping. Uh, the other one was Main Knitting, which is also on Lawrence Paquette Drive. They were asking for a variance for, um, an increase in their height because of the racking system for their product. They need it to be higher up. And with the code of the sprinkler system, it brought the building lower. Um, what we want is, we need a change in our law on the height requirements, you know, the limitations on the height of the building. They would like to see that changed. We did approve, um, the increase here because of the sprinkler system. They would like us to take a look at that law.
Right.
Okay? And the last one, um, for Steven and Karen McMillan, again, they wanted a variance to go, um, closer to the property line than what is allowed. Um, and, you know, they have the hill there on their house. But again, we did not know if the neighbor up on the top of the hill had been notified, so that was adjourned till, um, I need to know when it was sent out.
Right. Cause I just got in our, our mailbox tonight that, uh, that there is gonna be a zoning meeting planned from Monday, October 20th, at 6:00 PM at the village office, to address some of the issues that you just spoke about.
I just, I just have a question. Isn't a standard procedure for variance that all the neighbors in vicinity of the house are notified?
Right.
Not just the immediate next door neighbor?
I'm not sure on that. They were just talking about the neighbor that it was going to affect, because it was going towards their property line.
Because I, I know several years ago I was just putting a shed up, and the variance that I put in for, which of course was denied, they sent a letter to every neighbor that my property.
Ordered, yeah.
Not just the one closest to where the, the actual, I mean, just information. And I don't know who, who knows what, but I think that's the way it's supposed to be.
I believe it's all the neighbors on the property.
That's right, yeah. Right, not just the one that's closest to me.
Do you know if they were, then? They were all tucked in?
No, they weren't. That was all was said on my part.
Okay.
When I, my second zoning meeting.
I, I didn't know who was responsible.
It was my first, so.
I didn't know who was responsible for it, so I just, just thought I'd bring it up.
Yeah, in the end, that was my, my oversight.
I don't even know if that lady stays there anymore in that house.
So is that, uh?
But still, it's a, you know, the property value, it's gonna be harder to sell, not selling now. It's gonna be that much harder.
So anything else?
That's it.
Well, thank you very much. Trystee, for you.
Well, I've got a few things this evening. Uh, question on the survey pins that we were having done here, main building. Anybody here, or anything about that?
Well, I spoke to Dennis and she thought that Sam. Sam Pyman was out there the other day. I don't know where it is from there, but he should be.
Still moving, still working.
Oh, yeah, he should be, he should be getting back to us because he was out there shovel and what have you. So that is happening.
See, Bob, I mentioned something about that, out in the back, across the back, but probably 18, 19 years ago, that we had that little ditch across the back so we could train that.
Right.
So, and that's been filled in back there, so it's gonna probably take some time to find it. I don't know if he could.
That, that wouldn't have any bearing on it. He's like, last I heard, he's already found a pin. He's just gotta measure across.
Yeah, that's what I mean, if he finds a pin like over it.
He already, he already, he's already found one.
Oh, good.
Already found one.
Yeah, so apparently he's in the process of doing it.
Right, okay. Um, the dog catcher, um, issue, have we cut a check for him yet or is that, oh, still open for discussion?
We haven't.
Okay, okay, that was one of my questions.
Has Bob received any information?
Yeah, we did. Last one's meeting.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you were here, yeah. The last board meeting, he brought it in at that board meeting, so nobody really had a chance to review it. Um, we've got another topic, but I, I guess we've got it in old business, so I'll wait on that as far as uniforms.
Right.
And, um, made a visit to the wastewater plant and, uh, from what I understand, we have an incubator down there that is brand new. We've got a different type process that we use. That was brought to my attention and stuff, so I took the liberty to address the individual and say, if you think there's a market for it, find out and let me know. The employee's very persistent, found a connection. The other issue where these two play together, we have a influence monitoring box on the wall, and I'm not really up to speed with all this. I'm still, I make visits down there periodically to get a grip on everything. It's very sensitive to lighting. Apparently there's one gauge left working, the other one's kind of faded out screen, and the other one has gone completely and whatever. From, from what the employee's telling me, they make a less lightning sensitive instrument, which is the old dial that just spins, and it has a marker that describes the, the marks on it. The numbers, and, and, I'm not gonna, it doesn't matter. The numbers end up very close to what we could achieve for this incubator to eliminate and replace this other part. I just wanted to bring it to you, I don't, not only for to do anything with this because I don't completely understand it, and I, I have a hard time. I just wanted to get everybody to know that we've got a charting system down there that's not working and it hasn't worked for, do you know, Larry? Are you familiar with that?
Yeah.
It hasn't worked in a few months, I guess, through the summer. And we haven't really addressed it because they're manually doing something to circumvent that.
Have we been notified that it wasn't working?
I'm not really sure. I think so.
I think they've taken the hours at the pump to multiply it by the how much that it pumps.
So, that's the first, again, that's the first I heard of something.
Right. It's the first I've heard of it as well. And I guess it's something that's so automatic or so regular that when this happens, it's like, okay, it's not a, it's not a critical thing. They know how to do the math and how to go out and take numbers at strategic locations and do the formula to get the result that they need for the documentation. But I just figured I'd throw that out just so if there's any input, if there's any fact and finding you need me to get, I'm more than happy to. I've still got to do a lot more research because I...
So, I think what you're probably trying to do is instead of having that there, you have your regular one that's on a 24-hour, like a true line recorder.
A circular chart.
Circular recorder, right.
True line makes it...
It's more mechanical than, than it is digital.
That's why, that's why we have a water plant. But then we have the digital that we take the numbers off and subtract from each type.
So, I, I just figured I'd throw it out there. I'm going to do more research on it just to let you know what, and if it, if, once I get better answers, the incubator we have has been there for seven years and never been used. So, I, I'm thinking that it's not real viable that we keep it. But at the same time, there may be something about this that I'm not familiar with.
Right.
Of a code saying you have to have it. I, I don't know. So, once I do a little more homework on it. The telemetry unit up at the wastewater plant.
Water plant?
Or, no, the tower.
Tower.
The tower. There's been a lot of problems with it. I, I went up myself and I guess what I'm going to suggest when we get to paying the bills is to hold off on that until we do a little more research with Bob and find out what the agreement is we have with that company. Steam, whatever they are, yeah. I guess that they were up here and we did whatever we could for them to, to help them finish up in a timely manner. They finished up, left, and we were still left in a no operating position with a, with a pretty good sized bill, which is maybe justifiable. I don't understand it. I, I don't agree with it at this point, and that's probably because I don't understand it. So, I'm going to, when we go to paying the bills, make a note of that, not, or to, if we can hold off and get a little more information because it's, it's an extraordinary, you know, eighteen hundred dollars for something that when he left didn't work nor could have worked, come to find out, there was still parts missing. So, I left a pretty good gray area there. But that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you.
Well, the, the dog catcher thing, I, I just brought it out there. I kind of read the report. My own opinion on the dog catcher was, you know, what he did is he gave us a breakdown of two years. He went back a year and came up to this year. And, and you know, the first paragraph or so, you know, he, he lists four different occasions that he took action in one year's time. She had four for a total of one year. Doesn't indicate where, how, or whatever. So, I'm not sure how he logged this information or if he just works off memory. And then he goes on to 2003, basically the same thing. In the last nine months, he's indicating that there was three occasions that he's had issues. Again, stating dates and stuff, and, and that's okay. I, I'm not looking to point any fault on anybody, but I think that it'd be in our best interest that if we are paying dollars out, we should at least know the address and stuff. And I don't believe it's confidential information because he continued with a half a page and another quarter of a page talking about a couple of issues that happened this year, but not really identifying when, where, how they were. The occasions he's referring to is things that he didn't really take action on, but he did a big stroke of business. And that's okay.
Is there a job requirement list for him? I mean, should he maybe be keeping a log? I mean, being new, I haven't a clue, but...
I, I don't know that either. Being a, see, he, he does dog enforcement or animal enforcement for Moores, Champlain, Rozes Point, and possibly Shazie, or Ellenberg. I, I don't know that, but I do know it's Moores, Champlain, and Rozes Point. So, I'm only assuming Shazie and Ellenberg may be incorporated. I don't know what his procedure or his job description is. I guess what I'm saying is if we're going to pay a bill, we need more than this once every two years or sometimes an itemized every month when he sends it. If he didn't do anything that month, that's fine. Put down no active, no activity, no calls. If he had a call, had a call from somebody, he must know who from.
But I think if we...
More of an itemized bill, I guess. Whether he, he's mandated to do it or not by his bylaws, I don't know. But if we're paying a bill, I think we can request that and, and not have a problem with it.
We, we contract with Moores, right?
Now, Town of Moores.
The Town of Moores contract with them. So, I think it's, would it be for us to go to Town of Moores?
I think it would be us to go to Town of Moores and find out actually what that job curtails. What is the...
I, I think his, his performance with the complaints we've had, he's covering the bases. So, this original letter was sent to him, to Bruce directly. So, if he is performing a service for us, even if he's contracted by Moores, whoever we're writing the check to, do we write the check to Bruce or do we write the check to Town of Moores? So, maybe the letter should be addressed Town of Moores. We would, we would like to request a itemized statement, bill every quarter, every three months. Every quarter, so we can properly pay our bills on time and, and looking forward to do happy business with you. And let's just see how these reports go.
Right. I think that's what we need to...
I think that was something from, from the origin of all this, that that was supposed to happen that way.
Right. And, and we got this in response, which is very good, you know, but it doesn't really answer the questions that, that, at least I'm looking for. So, if that'll work, I guess, as far as the dog catcher. As far as paying the bill, or how far out of line are we? Thirty days past?
At the end of August, it's due to be...
Sixty days past due. I would suggest to the board just, just to keep face and, and good business policies.
I think we need...
Let's pay the bill.
We need to pay the bill.
Yep. I think we've been doing this right along.
Yeah. We need to pay the bill and go a little further in depth.
Yeah. And, and, I mean, he's performing a service from what I can see. I don't think there's anything foul. But if he can provide us, or the Town of Moores can provide us with this, this is what we're looking for.
Right.
Everybody agree? I don't know if that's to go to a motion vote or whatever.
Yeah, it's just good bookkeeping.
Yeah, I think we should, we keep a good practice on that. I mean, it's something, he's been contracted with us for quite a while and...
I think anything that we want to go, we go to the town from now on and find out. Actually, because that, because he contracts to the town. Now, we need to pay him. And then go a little further in depth. Find out. Actually, get over to Town of Moores and find out what his job is and what his duties are as...
What should we be receiving for this contract that we have with them? And surely, we should be entitled to an itemized bill.
For service record.
For that kind of money.
Yeah, for service record.
And that's pretty much all I have for this evening.
Well, thank you. The Board of Trustees, Bert Treger.
Revenue expansionary reports for September. Copy issued both this month. We get a water and sewer billing for the month of July, August, and September, excuse me, dated October 1st. The water billing was an amount of forty-two thousand, nine hundred and two dollars and sixty cents. And the sewer billing was seventy thousand, six hundred and five dollars and fifty-eight cents. And that's all I have.
Well, thank you. Mrs. Austin.
Will those numbers, does that number reflect collected or to be collected?
To be collected. Bill, out. Bill set that down. I'll get mine.
I don't want you.
It's up to one of yours.
Report of Superintendent. We all have Bob's written report here.
You go by that normal?
Well, usually, he, he puts it, what we, we tell him, he puts it in the written app he does his report on, yeah.
But the work report, isn't that your guideline for the, throughout the month?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We don't get a snagging with him.
Well, see, Bob himself, he's, he's saved this evening. He's not here.
Then we'll be nice to you.
Then we'll be nice to you. Okay, but I think we've got it all. Can I move on to correspondence? Mrs. Austin, please.
Item one is correspondence to TLT Dyers. For Dyers, regarding a backflow possession device, she'll be taken care of.
Yes.
Did they get it installed? Or it's been addressed? Has it been taken care of or addressed?
The new one's been, they've been installed over there. And that went over on Thursday, and he was waiting for the guy to come Friday, his father. And I said, well, I have to inspect it when you do it. And he was going to cut it off at the ceiling. They had to spick it down on the bottom. And I said, it'd be much better if you took and shut it off and cut it off right at this union, the cap there right here. And everything was done, it's all, all taken care of and shut down.
Now, we need to still provide water for fire protection?
Yes.
That's in the Town of Champlain?
Yeah.
And that still falls under?
Right.
Supply water for them?
As of right now, yeah.
So, any, any potable water that they could use has been kept off?
And there's no more air on the landfill?
That cured.
Cured every off. And all that then?
Good.
Item two is correspondence to Village Residents regarding an interest in a justice Item three is correspondence from the Fifth County Property Office regarding property tax extensions for the elderly and persons with disabilities.
We have till sometime early next year on this, right?
Living and interest, we have to... Our present limit is twenty thousand, five hundred.
Is this something that'll notify us if you're not, or should we put it in old business to be reminded about? Is this anything we can, we should even move on?
Well, if you would, if you want to raise the bill to, you have to look long.
Right. And I, I guess what we've done in the past, we just see what type of effect it has on, you know, hard, where, no, for the village.
Right.
What effect it would have on the village taxes as far as how much we were doing to free increase.
Isn't this for senior citizens and...
Yes.
Okay. So, it's not raising the village tax as a whole?
No, 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 no. It's for senior citizens, a...
And you can...
So, ours is twenty thousand, five hundred this time?
This passed in 2001.
Ours is twenty?
Twenty thousand, five hundred.
So, they were at twenty-one-five, they just raised it to twenty-four?
Yeah.
This is the county.
The county.
Table to the next meeting.
Table to the next meeting. The thing of it is, if you do this, I would like to, to find out that what cost it would be to us to do this.
There's no way you can do that. Because you don't know how many people in the village earn twenty thousand, twenty-one thousand, twenty-four thousand.
If they're over sixty-five, that'd be a senior citizen. Wouldn't they get registered at the county? If, if they're entitled to that credit now, the county would have a list about who's in...
If they're twenty-one-five, it's probably not the twenty-four that they're on it.
Gotcha, gotcha. Right, right, yeah, yeah. That's right. We have it at the twenty-one-five, but we don't, we don't know next year.
It really doesn't amount to a lot.
I know, it does. I would like to have this put on old business for, because I think in the past that we have done, and I'm a great believer in helping out our senior citizens, believe me. We're all headed that way. Hopefully, yeah, hopefully.
Hopefully not.
Item four is correspondence from James L. Fabe, whose manager's annoyed that we have it in the rest. Item five is correspondence to Jim Moon, Grantston Eight Program Assistant, requesting an extension on a river. Item six is correspondence to County Department of Law regarding public water supply.
Question on, on that. I, I still don't completely understand the billing part of this. They're asking us to, to bill this differently? Is that what this is now that they...
Not this, this is a proper hookup.
No. See, yeah, see what we're looking for?
Is this, okay, this is the other issue.
This is the other issue. This is the issue of the back bay with the water. Now, is that water going to our sewer? It's not being metered. So, are we getting more sewer than we're getting metered?
Mind me, see? Yeah. I'm completely impressed with that.
I see. I think what they need to do is give us a print of how that drain works, and we'll find out if it goes to our sewer or if it just goes to a dry well.
Or if they recirculate some of that.
It's wash water for cars and vehicles, I believe.
So, I know there was talk about recirculating that water that was...
You'd really have to do a diet.
Yeah.
A diet test. Run the water, you run the water in the sink and the bay in the garage. The meter doesn't turn, but it goes down the drain.
Okay, well, let's wait till...
Yeah, I know it.
Yeah. We won't go next one.
Let's wait till you get the report from the town.
Yeah.
Item seven is correspondence from Perma regarding our loss control program evaluation meeting.
That was excellent.
Sorry to interrupt you. And the last correspondence is Superintendent Sullivan from Perma regarding personal protecting equipment. Yes, it is. And that's all I have.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Austin. We're on to old business. Our down street speed signs, we are still waiting for our information from our attorney. I think we pretty well know where we have to go, but we need to make sure that that's where we're going. As soon as we get that correspondence, we will see what he recommends and we'll go from Purchase policy. Good to have an old business. Superintendent Serge, we're into that this evening. Uniform for the DPW. Mr. Poyah.
A little bit of research for us. We talked last month, just to bring Chuck up to speed, he wasn't here, in regards to uniforms and stuff, that in the last few years, the policy has been the employees are given X amount of dollars for safety shoes and X amount of dollars for matching shirts, matching whatever. So far, apparently, the employees can't seem to make this work. So, I suggested, well, let's be proud of our village, let's try to just project an image, let's, let's try to get uniformly looking and uniformly working. So, I did a little research on the cost of the uniforms, and, and what I came up with is, it's going to average around five dollars and fifty cents per week per employee, but that gives them eleven shirts and eleven pants. So, there's no excuses of geez, three are at the laundry, I only have two to wear, I got dirty, whatever. They do make, and this is something I'm not even sure of, I opted to look at red shirts and the standard blue Dicky pants. They, I'm finding out that they make an orange, not reflective orange, but it's a caution orange, like you, in what's Town of Peru, I think he says got them. These towns and villages are coming on to speed with it because obviously, they work in the streets. The cost for all the employees, all five employees, for five employees, I should say, is one thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars a year. Therefore, the number that we're paying them now, not to comply with the rules that were set in place, is about a thousand dollars a year. Therefore, it's going to cost the village probably four hundred and thirty dollars more per year. But leaving the safety shoe in place, that allotment is, is too separated. From what I understand, there's, there's two sums. One is for safety shoes, the other one's to wear the same type of uniforms. So, what I'd like to suggest to the board is leaving the safety shoe alone, I think, and especially from the reports we're getting from Perma, we're not doing too bad on the safety end of it. But if we retracted the other dollar amount, then, then it would leave it at four hundred and thirty dollars difference. More money that's going to cost the village to help put an image into the employees so they are appearance, the whole thing. The color, I'm not really sure. I, I think it would be a slight advantage by going with a safety orange for a couple of reasons. Again, you've got Perma involved with a safety issue taking points because we work in roads and so on and so forth. And it may deter the use of uniforms off duty. It's going to happen, it's fine, it's not an issue, but it's like correction officers are, are allowed to drive to and from work, and they're not allowed to go shopping, they're not allowed... I don't think any of these guys are going to want to go shopping with a caution orange shirt on. If they do, that's great, we'll know exactly where they are, so if we have a problem, we can find them. Find them in the dark. But like I say, the red and orange deal, I would not go any less than red, in my own opinion. And this is open for discussion. I just did a little bit of legwork to see what's going on.
Fourteen thirty covers eleven pair of pants and eleven shirts?
Times five employees.
What about like sweaters or winter coats or...
I think winter coats and that kind of thing should be left up to the employees like almost any other place of employment. These employees now, I feel, are at a comfortable spot. Obviously, from a employee's point of view, it can always be more, and I don't argue that. But at this point, with the benefits that are in place here and, and the equipment and, and the morale, the whole thing, I think it's, it's kind of important that we set an image of this village. And, and just an extra kick in the side that happened when Albert and I had the meeting with this developer. If we're, we do start to see new faces and, and development happening, we would, I would like to see it projected as a very knowledgeable crew, uniform crew, an obvious crew. They'll stand out when they're doing summer work in the village. A homeowner versus a worker, you can't tell the difference. They're not wearing their, they're not going by the ethics that we had put in place whenever it was. So, we're spending a thousand dollars a year for absolutely zero, as far as I'm concerned.
And did you ask the employees what they thought about this?
No. I, I don't think until the board has a say in it. I don't think it's an issue to the employees myself, to be honest with you.
No.
Um, if we are here to look out for the village and keep our employees in a uniform looking way, in a responsible, professional way. I think it's something we should decide on first and then go to the employees. And then again. Either way, even if you leave this policy in place, I'd like to see a receipt for the money sent to them. If they're buying safety shoes, I want the receipt from that individual for those safety shoes and a copy of the kept on file. Same thing with the shirts. We can get into doing shirts and pants and, okay, when you get them, you bring them in, we'll examine them, we'll authorize it or not. I don't have time for this. I don't know if anybody, I don't know if you want to start doing that because one's got buttons, the other one's got a collar. I think uniforms is the most sensible way to go in this fast-paced world here. And put it to bed. And, and they put their uniforms on every day. We're not going to pay for this stuff and then have them left at home.
We do keep track of who's had what.
The amount, do we have receipts on what they got?
In, in the bills. It would say, level two, it's those name on it, what shirts. There's no, um.
Dress code?
No way to tell colors or any of that stuff.
That's what I mean.
Five shirts and five pairs of pants. Each employee is allotted so much of here and it's, I mean, they're very good about that. The boots, um, the bills will pay a hundred dollars. If they buy things that are more than a hundred, they could do that themselves.
Sure.
That's, they all understand that and.
That, that sounds, I, I think that's a good thing. Is it? It's, that's just good practice. Yeah. The safety shoes are very important. I, I just, I guess, and, and maybe I'm reaching for straws here. Nobody's really said anything yet, and I don't want to sound like I'm trying to sell you something. My own personal opinion, uniforms in this type of environment where you're in the public's eye. To me makes a person look more professional, or that's the person to ask the question to on a job site.
Yeah.
Or there's an issue, you know, geez, which one works for the village? Which one's a homeowner?
Right.
Well, I have an issue. I need to ask somebody. It's that guy with the uniform. Done. The only thing.
I don't have a problem with uniforms.
Me either.
I have to wear them.
I wear one every.
So I don't have a problem with them. And it, I mean, it does signify who you are.
I, I, and again, the, the dollars, I don't like. Seems like every time I bring something up here, it costs the village money, you know? More than, than what it was. It's just going to cost you four hundred and thirty dollars more a year. Simple as that. One other point that I didn't bring up, I, I researched this at two different locations, okay? I'm a strong believer in dealing local if it's at all way possible. The numbers, from what I was told locally, could be matched if push came to shove, but they could not guarantee it at this point. But the number that I gave you does stand from another supplier. I would like to see it here locally, but.
What, for the pants and shirts?
Yep.
Who do we have local?
Can't be laundry.
Oh.
I would like to see it stay here.
Does this include washing these things too?
Absolutely. So if anything, the employee is, is benefiting a couple of times over. They tear a pair of pants, their shirt.
They fix and they're washed.
And they're washed and the whole thing. So this is kind of like a, a raise in a way or a benefit to their home costs. But, and, and, and what I'm looking at, it does help the image of the village that, that I'm slowly trying to help the best way I can to this little village in keeping a professional look or manner, uh, type thing. The only problem I've got is, is the color.
Well, orange, isn't that the color the prisoners wear when they come to rake the leaves?
I think the county sheriff's department wear orange coveralls.
I mean, does that make him a Nazi prisoner or does he work for the village, you know?
From what I understand, these, and I, I should have wrote it down. It was Peru and Alsable or not Alsable, but Clittenville, I think it was, are moving to this. Because, and I don't know if that had anything to do with Perma or not.
Right.
I can only assume it's a safety issue and the vest and all this, it is approved by DOT or whoever's in charge of colors. It's a DOT, it's a, it's approved by the safety coloring organization that you don't need a vest. I'm not saying don't wear them. I'm just saying you're more visible in a traffic area. I haven't seen them, so I have a hard time imagining a worn shirt. I, I won't, uh.
Well, I, I know going back years ago when we, when we said we were going to give X number of dollars. I mean, before that, we had uniforms, right?
Yeah, we had uniforms, yeah.
The village actually, uh, I came up with their purchase or we, we contracted with them. I can't remember.
With the laundry.
Yeah. But, I mean, the guys, well, we don't want, we'd rather get our own stuff, but it was supposed to, but everybody's supposed to get the same type of clothing, correct? Well, they don't do that now, correct?
No.
And that, so that kind of defeats the purpose of us giving the money to the employees to buy something that's going to match so they can be identified.
So either we have to do it or leave it alone.
I don't feel, I don't feel as though with the crew that we have weren't babysitting, nor do I think they need to be babysitting. I think we have a good crew. If this policy didn't work, then maybe we need to do something a little different like this and say, that's the way it is. And as far as getting their okay on it, I don't think we need their okay.
No.
I, I think that this is something that they had the opportunity to abide or comply.
We don't need their okay.
Yeah.
No, what I was referring to, you had said that you were going to talk with them as far as color or whether they thought, you know, the Dickies or, you know, whatever kind of pant you wanted to go with.
Right, I think.
You had said you were going to consult with them and I was just curious if you had to get their.
No, as I started thinking about it, I says, what good will it do? Because maybe we don't want this. I, I'm not trying to sell you something here. It's my own opinion and I want everybody to understand where I'm coming from. I'm not here to spend an extra four hundred and thirty dollars a year. It's just way lame. It's, it's.
My, my opinion, whoever is the supplier of the uniform, I would like to see one.
Yeah.
I would like to see a shirt and a pair of pants.
And one of my questions is summertime. Guys like to wear T-shirts as compared to collared shirts, right? Do you agree?
Well, I was for college reasons.
Oh, you, okay. But I mean, there are some, and, and I don't know, and it doesn't matter to me, but you'd have to have the same. Are T-shirts available through this also?
I believe they are. Again, it's another cost. They do, they do make available short sleeve and long sleeve.
What is this for? Just short sleeve?
You have your choice. You can have a leather long, eleven short, or you can mix it. You can have five and five or five and six.
Years ago, I used to have the short sleeve and the long sleeve.
A lot of times they mix it. And if you get into the winter months, you know, spring and fall, you're going to wear the long sleeve. In the winter months, I don't think a short sleeve matters. Like even my guys do it. They'll put a sweatshirt on their shirt over it or, you know, with the short sleeves or your jacket's on.
Right, so it doesn't make any difference.
Doesn't matter. You're not going to see it anyways, so.
I.
I think the pants are going to be standard uniform pants to hide where you go. The shirt is my big question and, and again, probably like yours. Maybe if we could see one, it'd make a big difference. You know, I just don't want to put somebody out there to fluorescent orange and be the top of the town like there's a convict that escaped.
But in the wintertime, you're not going to see that fluorescent.
You'll never see it. That's right. But in, in a safety aspect of it, I can understand and I agree with it, and these other towns or villages are going with it. And I will get a list of the names. He told me two different places. I don't remember who, and I drive all these towns, so I.
Yeah.
And I'm saying, okay, next time I'm through there, I'll stop and take a gander, but I couldn't remember which ones, nor have I been that way in the timeframe, but I got this information.
Because we are in, we are out in the roadway a lot, so I think, you know, we really need to, from a safety point of view as well.
And do we have the safety vests that were us in?
Yeah, do you want that?
Orange, do the, and the guys wear them?
We don't have those vests. Well, we're out directing, like, we're up there directing traffic.
But the normal stop to check a manhole or turn a curb off?
No.
You'd probably put the vests on. And that's where this, not that we've had any problems, but it's more recognizable to an oncoming car, truck or whatever. Vehicles stopped or walking around to get to a curb or, you know, not that we have a problem, it's just from Perma's point of view, they're probably like, hey, you're a couple more points or something.
Steve Ross's one was up to the date and they had, they had a dark blue T-shirt like that. Gray letters, it says Village Ross, it wasn't noticeable. Not with the light gray on, the dark blue, unless you looked right at it.
I mean, I'm not, I don't want to make a billboard, but if we're going to do it, we might as well go for the safety end of it. And, and be, get the image out there that we're looking for. We're professionals here. I, I think we are. We're running a good ship.
Well, why don't we see if we can get a shirt for an export meeting? Okay? I, I think we need to do that. I think we need to.
I'll get the, the blue written, the orange.
Think we'd like to do that.
We'll shut the door off and see which one goes.
I think if we're going to go to that image, I think we need to at least address it. And I think it's a good thing to have.
I, I got a question. What, like on the, I know the Dicky pants, thin pants. Thin pants are very thin. And most, most of the winter, you have to wear long johns with them. But when you're in a haul truck all day long, you've got long johns on, you do little study.
The right way to do that, or at least this is what my guys do, is a pair of bib overalls. They come off very easy. Two big zippers on the side, you drop your strap, boom. So if you know you're going to be inside of a home or inside of a truck.
I'm talking about plowing and you're plowing snow for three, four hours. Sometimes you fall constantly with it, you know?
Right.
And then, then you're, you're in, and you're all sweating, then you get out.
Well, no, you take them off.
No, I'm not talking, talking about just having the, the, you, you wear long johns with your pants.
Well, what I'm saying is with bib overalls, you wouldn't need to wear long johns with your pants. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
My guys, a lot of times when they're driving from here to Peru.
The bib overalls are a hundred and some dollars if you can cart hard.
But you guys aren't underpaid, I can tell, but I mean, that's, that's.
I, I know that.
Obviously, Steve wouldn't need one working down the wastewater pipe. You know, if, if your job classification is a certain area. And I think you'll find that most anywhere as you go, that it's not up to the employer to dress the employees. If we want to project an image, fine, you know, we can go that far. But as far as saying, geez, you can't wear flip flops today because it's cold enough. I need to buy you a pair of shoes. No. That's up to the employee to know that, geez, I need shoes, you know, uh. How far are you going to go with that suit? You can't, uh. Okay, I'll do that. I'll get.
Would you do that, please?
Yeah.
I think we need to, to at least look at it and see what we can see with it.
Well, you might as well bring a pair of the pants too, right?
Right.
Are there different?
They're all, they're all the same. Probably no, the whole one.
So it's just one kind, you don't have to have your weight in the.
They make a western, they make a, um.
There's no difference?
The Dicky, so. The regular pockets and then the western.
Probably not to the long day. Unless you need, you get the heavy duty dick.
They make whatever you want, whatever you want.
So you don't distinguish for rental?
We don't.
No, you can get around most of the time here. They're just, uh, blue Dickies like that.
Okay, then. So you're going to do that with that? So I think, anybody else have any all business? Onto new business? Anybody have any new business to come before the board this evening? Okay, did I have a motion and a second to go into executive session, please? Motion to take a decision. Scott Short, second. Chuck Conner's on the paper?
Aye.
All right.